...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this evening, for all that are here, and we ask that you be with this city and be with us from now on this year as we make important decisions about everything that goes on here. We ask that you just conduct this meeting as it should go and make it flow very evenly. All we say we pray in your name.
I'd like to welcome all of our guests at this. In fact, I think I just saw Senator in the back come in. Senator Beetz, thank you for being here. Appreciate your time. Unfortunately... Oh, is Mandy here?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I haven't seen you.
It's okay.
I say Representative Mandy Malo.
It's okay.
I see you being here as well. Have anyone else that I haven't seen? And we have a lot of people very important. I can assure you there are particular ones you mentioned of those. Unfortunately, the new Judge Pope is ill and will not be here for the swearing-in. We found that out this afternoon. But I guess he is, you know, staying at home both for his benefit to recover and our benefit too. So there's so much sickness going around that we have to respect that decision. So I will be swearing-in our new council members. We will do that one at a time. And so let's just go ahead and they are welcome to bring their spouse or partner or whoever they wish with them for this swearing-in. And they have an option of having a Bible or not. You know, that's their choice as well. So let's go ahead and do that so that they can be seated and we can move forward to the rest of our meeting. Of course, we have three newly elected council members, and we award one, two, and three. And I think we will go with Ward One first, which will be Ms. Sandy McGrue. And first, I want to congratulate all of them, but I certainly want to congratulate you and ask you to come forward. And we will swear you in, and once you're sworn in, they will take their proper seat here at the dock. How are we going to do this? Come on, we've got to get those people to get seated. Get over here. Place your hand on the bottle and raise your right hand. And we have to be... I state your name.
I, Sandy McGrue.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of the City of Canton.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the council member of Canton.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof...
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia.
As well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations. Ward Two, Bill Grant. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bill Grant.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city.
That I will faithfully perform the duties as council member of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia.
As well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations. Last but not least, John Russ, Ward Three.
I put my hand on the bottle. No, no, she was, she had a right to.
I state your name.
I, John R. Russ.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia.
As well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations. I'd like to make a few comments to our new council members, and I think they are also appropriate, I hope, to the entire council at this point. This is a very special night. It's not just special for these candidates. It's special for our entire city. Each of you has received a special honor. You have been selected by the citizens of this city by a resounding mode of confidence to be their representative to your city government. Only relatively few citizens actually receive this honor. You should never take this honor for granted. I am reminded of what former Governor Seale Miller always said at every speech I heard him make. And that was, if you ever see a turtle on a fence post, you know he had help getting there. He didn't get there by himself. And so it is with you and I and all elected officials who receive this honor. Somebody helped us get there. And I think you must never forget that the same people that helped you get there and helped that turtle get on that fence post can also help that turtle down. You have been given both an opportunity, I think, and a challenge. A challenge to serve your community and to make your community better. While the election brought us three new council members, it also sent a message to all of us, one that we should have all heard loud and clear. Some of the messages that we all should have heard would include, keep the taxes low, consider all options before making a decision, and implement the most cost-effective approach to resolving an issue. The senior exemption stays. The garbage rate for seniors goes. We should not charge more for a service or utility than it takes to operate that utility effectively. We should not look for ways to spend money, but rather for ways to save money. We need to be a friend and partner to existing businesses and to those wanting to come into our city. We need to let investors know that Canton means business and that we appreciate business. We need to develop a cohesive vision for our city, a process which has already begun, and you'll hear more about a little later. We need to develop a plan before we take an action on an issue, a plan that will be consistent with that vision for our city. We need to protect our historical landmarks. We need to keep the work session and voting session separate to allow for more public input and council discussion. We need to protect our city from lawsuits, adverse circumstances, and waste. We also heard from the voters that the old-time negative politics are not part of our community. This list is not exhaustive by any means. But above all, I think we should have all heard from our most, the message we should have all heard from our most recent election is that we need to conduct city business in a civil, respectful, and orderly manner. This council is ready to move forward. This council will not shy away from difficult decisions. You will see some bold, yet necessary actions by this council in an effort to make our city even better. We are Canton. All of you are Canton. This is the county seat of Cherokee County. We have an obligation, I believe, to hold that distinction high and with honor. And I am confident, I have no reservations at all, that this new council will make our citizens proud. Thank you. Okay, first order of business with our new council is to consider to approve the agenda, which we've had a package for several of the... Mr. Cummins?
Yeah, I'd like to add, under Old Business as the first item, city manager contract.
Anyone have anything else? Okay? Not? Do we have a motion that we approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the council to introduce items.
Okay.
I'd like to enter into a conversation about expanding the border of Main Street program.
Okay. Main Street, expanding Main Street boundaries?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Happy to...
I would like to, I was present during the last meeting, but I did go online to watch Ms. Cummins introduce something that we were... Kevin, Ms. Cummins, to have Mayor take you on at the park for the next two to three, four months completion, which she's done an outstanding job. He's done a lot for this city. We only knew, but I don't see it on our agenda to... Should that be in council introduced items, or should that be Old Business?
Well, that'd be, you know...
I'm not ready to introduce that.
What's that? I'm sorry.
I'm not ready to introduce.
Okay.
What can I introduce then?
Well, I guess you could bring it up under council introduced topics.
Okay.
We should do that. Anyone else? Anything else? Okay, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as...
So move.
Have a sec. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. You have in your package there the amendments from the December of the 19th, 2013 meeting. Are there any corrections, deletions, additions to those minutes? Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
Have a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's no. All members voting for the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Comment, actually, the new council member should be shown as standing.
That's a good point. Okay.
So all the others can be voted for.
You also have in your package for informational purposes the financial statements for November 2013. Is there, are there any questions or comments regarding that? Okay, if not, we will go in our ten-minute public period. We have a couple of individuals. We have Andy Potts. Here, you want to come on up?
I haven't changed my name there since last time.
Doesn't look like it.
Andy signed up, but he got called home for an emergency, and he asked for me to speak for him. I'm going to do the best I can do. I'm Jim Wynden.
Yes.
To the new council members, welcome. Congratulations and good luck. It's good to see everybody here. Hooky, I haven't seen you in a while, and the other council members. I think there's going to be a lot of good things happening in the coming weeks and months and years. So thank you all for getting down to it. I'm here to talk about something that I've talked about more than once before to the council. And for those of you who are new, hopefully this won't be news because you have been audience members from time to time. But tonight, I believe on your agenda, there's going to be some discussion about hiring an outside consultant to address the obvious problems that we have with the streets in Canton. And I'm all for that. I think that's a great idea. But one thing has come to my attention recently that I think is important to bring to the new member of the council's attention as well as mayor and the older members. I believe that there's provision that states that if there's direct physical damage happening to property as a result of the condition of the streets in the city of Canton, that those particular streets and those items have to be addressed promptly and immediately. And that's what we've got on wooded mountain trail. We've got driveways that are breaking off in huge chunks. We've got the backyard at 521 Wooded Mountain Trail that's had about $10,000 worth of damage recently from the rains, simply because the drainage on that street is improper and it funnels all the water through this gentleman's backyard. So we've got 19 houses. Seventeen of them have damage, and the damage is ongoing. So I would ask the council that when you consider the outside consultant's plan, that you remove the expense of wooded mountain trail from being included in that study and simply move forward with addressing the ultimate temporary repairs and then ultimately the final resolution. Mr. Potts also advised that he's going to be delivering a photo disc to each of you to look at the damages that are occurring as well as a comprehensive kind of guide to wooded mountain trail. And I certainly invite all of you to set your GPSs and take a drive down that road yourselves and I think that probably be immediate. Thank you, and best of luck again.
Thank you.
Ben Key. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I wish you all, I hope you all had a Merry Christmas and I wish you had a New Year. Have to bear with me. I'm a little over the weather. So coughed up, but hear my voice. Can't resist, yell out. As the mayor said, my name is Ben Key, and I'm chairman of the Stormwater Advisory Board. I come before you tonight to ask that you please consider adopting the stormwater budget that was recommended by the Stormwater Advisory Board back in the summer. A copy of that budget is being circulated now. This is the third time I've come before the council to make such a request, but have been unsuccessful each time. Guess I'm hoping that the third time is indeed the charm. In fact, I kind of see as I'm giving you guys a Christmas present. And not, it isn't very often, I think, that a new council gets a chance to lower taxes the first day of the job. So there you go. For those new to counseling in the audience, I'd like to point out a few things regarding our stormwater program. The main objective and purpose of this program is to clean the water that comes from rainstorms that eventually make it into our streams, creeks, rivers, and reservoirs. It's all about improving water quality, not sidewalks, bridges, and playgrounds. Of the 78 municipalities within the Atlanta Regional Fund, the ARC, only 39 fund their stormwater program through a stormwater fee. The other municipalities just collect it through their general fund. Of those 39 who use a fee, only three have fees as high or higher than ours. Cherokee County funds its stormwater program through the general fund and does so at a cost of the taxpayers of around $265,000. 62% of the stormwater fees collected by the City of Canton come from businesses. And that's not exactly rolling out the red carpet for people coming to look for opportunities in the city of Canton. Our stormwater rate has never been changed since the inception of the program, although our budget has decreased over 40% since its inception. At the end of the fiscal year 2013, we had cash reserves in the amount of $600,000. Those funds have already been collected in the name of cleaning the stormwater, but have not gone to that use as of yet. You all got a copy of the budget?
Yes.
As you can see, it's not very different from the one that you guys adopted back in September. In fact, the only change has come, if you look on the line item of repairs and maintenance infrastructure, that number just decreased by about $100,000. The reason for that, there was a project that was on the 2013 budget that was not complete. So rather than budgeting it for 14, since we've already collected the money, we took it off there. The big line item comes from the capital outlays and vehicle, the next to last item. It's kind of the tension that we need to replace our street sweeper. It's one of the main functions of the program is sweeping the streets. And it was our board's recommendation that we, rather than purchasing outright a new street sweeper, that we enter into a new capital lease on a new vehicle, which is how we currently finance our street sweeper now is through a lease, not ownership. We also added $150,000 for contingencies. A few months back, there was some damage down at Bolin Park with some trees falling, and it was real close to the road and sidewalk down in Bolin Park. We didn't have those figures in, what would cost of repairs. We budgeted a healthy contingency for that amount. The main difference in our budget versus the one that has been approved comes on the revenue side. As I mentioned, since the beginning of our, of the program's inception, the rate has never changed. All the while, our budget has decreased over 40%. So my board suggested a 35% reduction in the stormwater utility fee. That's, that would bring the total of revenues in at $682,500. The penalties and interest and interest income will also decrease by 35%. Where we would make the difference up would be from that $600,000 cash we have sitting in the bank. Our estimate shows it should be about $222,000 that we would need to use of that $600,000 to fund the shortfall. That would still leave us with over $375,000 in reserve. Not to mention the fact that we're already three months into the year, and we have been billing out at the old rate. So record the way the year done. So if you voted for a 35% reduction tonight, in actuality, it would only be a 26.25% reduction, because we've already collected those monies. And I don't see as minimum refund checks, so. If anybody has any questions about the program in general or this budget specifically, I'd be happy to answer them now or later. But again, I thank you for your time.
If we're able to ask any question.
This council desires to do so, sure. Okay. But do you have a question?
I have a question if the council approves that.
If the council approves dialogue, that the 10-minute input cleared, you might have any problem with it. All right, let's ask the question.
fifty thousand dollars of total revenue projected, it's, comes out to be sixty-two percent of all of the annualized stormwater funds come from non-segal family residences, yes, sir.
Is that something that, is that the part that needs to be adjusted?
In my opinion, it all needs to be adjusted, but obviously we can get more done, take, taking on that. You know, someone paying a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars a month in stormwater is gonna, would certainly have a greater benefit of getting a, a larger reduction versus the normal four dollar rate.
One of the, we have run this through across the board thirty-five. As long as we're gonna do something, just do something that's a refined, if the business part is out of line, the commercial part's out of line, we need to reform or improve that as we do this.
Well, we can certainly, you know, go at it more aggressively if you, if you would like, you know, we just want to provide, now, again, we, we've been unsuccessful two times, so we're just trying to come with something that's, that's equitable for everyone. You know, most of those people that own businesses probably aren't citizens and don't even get to vote, so.
Well, I understand equitable for everyone, but you're saying that it's not equitable if, because the commercial's paying an undue amount. Or is it? I don't know. I'm looking for you with that in answer.
They're paying, oh, they're paying the same rate, actually.
There's two, there's two separate rates.
It's equitable. He says the same and you say it's two separate, it's because they have parking lots.
There's, there's two separate rates. And Mr. West could, could sort of speak to this better than I could, being the engineer, but there's, there's two rates, roughly a four dollar rate and an eight dollar rate, depending on the amount. It's all about the amount of impervious square footage that you have.
Right.
And after you reach a certain threshold, you jump from the four dollar rate to the eight dollar rate. And then that rate is multiplied by your impervious runoff unit, ERU, I believe they call it, to come up with your utility fee.
How did we establish the four and eight dollars? I mean, we're discounting.
That was before my time goes, that was before all our time.
Also, it's written on the wall, maybe we should have looked at the whole thing.
Well, I think that's what they've been doing, basically, is taking a look at it and, and looking at the, the budget compared to, to revenues and early on, the, the revenues have far exceeded what the absolute needed budget, I think, was.
I understand that, but.
Mr. Cummins, you got a question?
Well, I've got a clarification. Clarification is, is the charge is based on what they call an IPU, an impervious unit. And the reason that some houses have, and residential have an eight dollar rate is they exceed the amount of square footage of that impervious surface that four dollars is applied to. I think it's four dollars and eight cents to be exact. And that four dollars and eight cents covers up to a certain amount of square footage. You go over that to the next level, you pay eight dollars and sixteen cents. Commercial, I believe, is charged the same rate per square footage of impervious unit.
Right.
And, but you have to take into consideration, they have parking lots and everything else. That was the first point. The second point is my intention in the February work session to introduce two things. Number one, a modification to the ordinance, stormwater ordinance. And number two, a proposed rate reduction. So it is my intention to introduce that in the work session in February.
Okay, anyone else?
There's just one comment, having worked with Kent Babb a lot on these kind of issues with the unified code, there is things that the large spenders of runoff fees can do to mitigate the costs of stormwater fees they pay monthly, like creating impervious surfaces in the parking lots. Maybe not very popular, they have squares that have openings in them, but that's in fact a way to really dramatically reduce your stormwater rates. For some reason, commercial probably doesn't seem to wanna do that.
Because it does make.
There are things that they can do.
Mr. West, will you put the microphone a little closer?
There are, there are things that they can do to mitigate the cost.
I'm not suggesting that in lieu of reducing it, but I am saying there are some things that they can do.
Sure, and, and our board has also recently revised, and I'm not sure exactly if it's gotten in front of you guys yet, but we are planning to revise the credit manual program, you know, that, as it's currently written, you have to hire an engineer and it, you would, you would, you would never recoup the cost. It, it doesn't make fiscal sense to, to do, as, as it is currently in there.
No, but maybe as part of a rolling out the carpet, we can tell them how to save money on the storm, I think we should have to do that.
Sure, they, they surely should be, uh, they should be told.
Well, may I have a question?
Sure.
In your earlier statement, you were saying there was some, when you were saying what the stormwater fund was for, as far as quality of water runoff from streets and parking lots and, and, but not for this and that. What are those, is it specifically used those words in your documentation, what it does not?
Well, we've, we've obviously expressed our differences on the, the uses of the stormwater.
But I'm asking you, what does it say in the document? What are the words?
I don't have the document in front of me, so I'm not prepared to, you know, to quote it.
So we don't know, I, I don't ask you to quote it, but are those words that you've used? You mentioned playground and I forget what other two you mentioned in there. Are they specifically stated in your manuals?
I've never seen them.
I think it's very, well, honestly, it's very vague, as, as far as its purpose goes. I think the, there was an intent, at least it was my understanding, that the intent was, it was to correct problems that affected water quality through runoff. And, and in my opinion is it wasn't intended to, to build new facilities. In other words, it wasn't intended to, to, for instance, to the park, even to build a park and use stormwater to pay for a new construction, you know what I'm saying? But that's just my opinion and I don't know, I don't think it prohibits that.
Yeah, and I understand that it's not used for that, but if we built and didn't take into consideration, then we'd have to come back at a later date and go back and improve the part to prevent the runoff. So you do it either, you do it upfront or you do it afterwards, but you're gonna have the runoff.
Of, of course you do it and that's addressed in our development building code thoroughly.
Mr. Cummins?
All of this, the, the, the current ordinance is very vague and it's my intention to make a significant clarification on the usage of stormwater fees collected to present to council.
Anyone else?
Is that, one last, is that it? Cummins says he's gonna write it. Who writes it?
I write it.
I thought this comes down from the state.
I don't know.
Not our ordinance.
Kind of state document.
We don't have to have a stormwater utility, actually. I know we don't have to have one. And so we can write any ordinance we want to regarding that, but we do have to meet certain criteria, you know, whether we have a stormwater utility or not. But, okay. Ben, thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, no one else on the, on the kind of here, so we're, we're, Adam, under old business, Mr. Cummins, city manager contract?
Yes, as many, may not be aware, our city manager, Mr. Wood, has submitted a resignation. I'd like to make the motion that we accept his resignation as submitted.
Second. Motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not?
Then you give a reason for his resignation. Who accepted the resignation?
That's what we're doing right now.
Where, where is it? I don't see it.
You won't see it?
Sure.
This one right here. I, I have to sign it. Okay, he's standing. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those, no?
No.
All members voting to this motion, the exception of Mr. Huffman. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion of the Brown Park restrooms, which we talked about last, at the last meeting, I believe. The, these are restrooms which would be constructed to the rear of the police department there and it would be available for those utilizing Brown Park. Be pretty important, I think, for special events and so forth. We did have some bids on those. The bids were way far apart. We talked about this in, in detail at the last meeting. In fact, I, I believe there was some consideration for maybe actually rebidding that and I think that may be what we may, may want to do. Is Joby, Joby here?
Yeah.
Joby, were you involved in that, in that bid process?
Uh, yes.
Joby's our engineer, city engineer.
Yes, I would, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I don't, it wasn't clear. I mean, I think the, the, the lowest quote was like seventy-eight and the highest was like two hundred and fifty-something, right?
Yeah, I, a little bit of history, we, at one time we looked at having that addition on the side of the building. We had order of magnitude, ask lust construction, get us in the ballpark, we thought it'd come in around sixty thousand.
Yeah.
And we decided to move it kind of around the corner. We knew the price was going to go up. We didn't have a lot of interest in, from contractors. We think it went above and beyond by soliciting bids, we knew it was gonna be under the, behind the boundaries, but.
I, I would, I would suggest that we put this on the next agenda for, and make a decision about whether we wanna rebid it or not. I mean, I would recommend that we do that, considering the variation between the two bids.
Your question, I'll just, I'm clarification of the location of those bathrooms, it say behind the police.
They're on this side, but there's, there's sort of an indentation at the back of, of the, if, if you walk down, you must see there's an indentation, a wall, you can tap, kinda step down a little bit, but you would just sort of feel that indentation in at the back of the, this, this, uh, police station.
So on the police side, station side of the wall or on the Brown Park side of the wall?
It's what?
Is on the police?
No, it's on, it's on the brown, it'll face out the Brown Park, but it'll just basically, hopefully, looks sort of like the exterior of the, uh, uh, police station there.
It would basically take the place of that green military style storage box if you go by.
Is that what that, it's not a generator, what is that?
It's just a empty store.
Oh, okay, just sitting in that indentation there.
So we're not necessarily losing space in Brown Park.
No, you would not be losing any space in Brown Park to that. Anyone else?
Okay. I, I just had one question. Joby, do we have any specs on how big this is gonna be or, or what's required?
Yes, we do. We've, we've got some architectural plans drawn up.
We'd get a sketch for the, maybe for the next meeting, before the next meeting.
Certainly, yeah, we'll, we'll get a sketch out, we'll send you copies of the plans. It's four, male and female, two bathrooms.
Separate. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, under new business, we, we have action on the meeting agenda and voting procedures. Mr. Cummins? Not too long ago, the council changed its process of being able to vote at every single meeting. It's a process that I do not agree with. There are two major reasons why I don't agree with it. The first is that if we can vote at any particular time, the citizens have absolutely no notice of a decision that we might make here that affects them. The second reason is a council member can take advantage of other council members by springing a mandatory, mandatory vote by all council members on something that they themselves are not aware of. So what this procedure does is it goes back to our work session, which is the first Thursday of the month, and the third Thursday of each month will be a voting session. And there's a verbiage in there that describes it, that it, in order to be voted on, it must be first appear as an agenda item on a work session, the preceding work session, not a work session six or eight months ago, but if you're intending to have something to come up for a vote in the month of February, it could, it will be an agenda item on the work session in February. It also goes further on to say when agenda items have to be submitted and it limits the addition of items to the agenda after the agenda is approved. And once the agenda's approved, nothing new can be added. The proper procedure, as Mr. Huffman has added, or made modifications to the agenda as I did tonight, will be at the beginning of the meeting. Once the agenda is approved, then that is the approved agenda and we will not go any further. It goes further to declare what an emergency is, because emergencies do exist. There are two ways to handle an emergency. And let me first of all define what I have defined, or the way I have defined an emergency. An emergency will be something that would create a public safety problem and/or if a delay in a decision would create an unnecessary financial impact on the city. The majority of council members in attendance must declare such conditions exist and clearly state for public record those conditions in order to deviate from policy. So that's one way. It can be done in a regular meeting or if we have emergency, we have the mechanics of still generating a call or a special call meeting to do a single issue twenty-four hours in advance. We could call. And since we are still under the old process of voting, I would like to make the motion that we adopt the, uh, meeting agenda and voting procedures as I have here put in and this will be the last time that we vote at a work session.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Do we have any other discussion? Any comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, no? All members voting for the motion. Out of the discussion of the city code to allow for retail sales of growlers to provide for wine shops and provide for ancillary tasting license, this will be an amendment to our alcohol license and I'm gonna, I, I still have some question exactly how some of this may work, but I'm gonna ask our city attorney if he would kind of help us to explain exactly what it, what it does.
It started with a question of how would we, what needed to be changed to allow growler, excuse me, the, the growlers, a, part of it is how you definition of growler is store, where you would go and have refillable bottles that fill up your bottle, they seal it and you walk away. Our Georgia Department of Revenue several years ago issued a ruling with change, means in Georgia, declared that that was a package. So it's allowed under a package license. Now, same as you go by a can of beer, you, you can now buy a refillable bottle that's sealed up under the State Department of Revenue rules. So what we would have to do to allow that in Canton is to alter the package store requirements that require a certain, a number of floor space to be, it, it limited the amount of floor space that you could sell alcohol, like in a convenience stores, mostly other products. So that's what's really changing here. The eighty percent floor space requirement being non-alcohol, we are providing that that restriction does not apply in historic downtown Canton, which is a boundary we defined previously in the food requirement, where we, we reduced food requirement downtown and the boundaries are set forth in here, so just picked up that same boundary. So in downtown, you would not have the floor space restriction and therefore you could sell just beer in a growler store without having to sell eighty percent of other products. So that's the change that allows the growler. The other is that there's a prohibition against refilling bottles and so we said, except for growlers, you cannot refill bottles. And growlers is fine. And then we have, it has. The eighty percent floor space requirement being non-alcohol. We are providing that that restriction does not apply in historic downtown Canton, which is a boundary we defined previously in the food requirement where we, we reduced food requirement downtown. The boundaries are set forward here, so just picked up that same boundary. Uh, so in downtown, you would not have the floor space restriction and therefore you could sell just beer in a growler store without having to sell eighty percent of other products. So that's the change that allows the growler. The other is that, um, there's a prohibition against refilling bottles. And so we said, except for growlers, you cannot refill bottles. And growlers is fine. And then we have, it has some, um, rules in there about, at the securely sealed on the premise with a tamper-proof plastic cap and so forth. So some of that is state stuff, so, um, that's, that's what we had to do to allow growler stores. The, the wine shop is actually, is a winery. There's a separate ordinance that's not actually attached to the agenda. There are two different ordinances. That was to allow Georgia Farm Winery to open up a store that only sold its wine in Canton. That's a state license.
You can only sell that wine from that winery, Georgia winery. And, and they can have tastings, right?
That, this ordinance did allow both beer and wine tastings as a separate license.
Now, that assumes they're charging for tastings, right?
No, you cannot charge.
You cannot charge. So they can't, you can't give wine, you can't give a taste away now? Under our current law? Mr. Cummings?
I answered that incorrectly. You, you could, but probably not as part of an organized.
Okay, okay.
I went through the ordinance. I do have one particular thing that I'd like added to it, Mr. Dyer. And it's under six dash three eighty-eight tasting limitations. As you highlighted, the purpose of the wine was wineries who sell their product. I would like, uh, under that six dash three eighty-eight, sub-paragraph C, that would read something to the effect that any malt beverage or wine offered for sale within the premises must be made available for tasting upon request by the customer. I.e., I do not want to create a package store that tastes one bottle of one particular wine and sells four hundred varieties. Because I think that puts at a disadvantage the Krogers, the Publixes and everything that have to adhere to a different set of rules relative to size of their store and to the percentage of their sales. So in other words, this is a winery doing this for tasting purposes. Here's a taste, you like the wine, we'll bottle it or we have bottles of wine for sale.
If, if you're trying to prohibit Publix or Kroger from doing it, we're going to have to make some changes. Because they would be allowed to deal, they, they would.
If they were downtown.
No. The ancillary tasting license as we, as proposed is not limited to downtown. So if we wanted to make that just downtown, we have to say so as well. Downtown with just the growler.
Yeah, we're getting a, we're creating a, the ability to have a package store that virtually has no tasting. So that somebody could come in that didn't have a winery and just open up a package store that sold wine downtown.
Correct.
And I don't concur with that being done. I think we're creating two different sets of rules. One set of rules for Kroger that sits out in, uh, in, in one part of the city and another set of rules for another, of, of business in a downtown area. And I don't, I don't think it's a fair and equitable.
And, Mr. Cummings, then could we expand that to where a, we don't limit the wine store, uh, instead of growler, a wine store should be able to open up anywhere in the city?
I think part of the purpose of this is to help, help our downtown. I would, I, I, I would like to see whatever we can do to, to limit that to the downtown area. Whether it's wine or beer or whatever.
I mean, the growlers, you understand, is if they got kegs, they're filling from the kegs. They're giving you a taste out of the kegs. So it's not an issue typically with the growlers. But a wine store could sit there with one generic bottle of wine. You could take a taste and you'd have your choice of four hundred different wines. And I think then what we're doing is we're creating or we're giving this different set of rules to one business and that, then we require from another business, i.e. Kroger, Engels, Walmart, Publix, et cetera.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm awful building downtown. And I, I was wanting to bring this up later, but you're, come right in with this conversation, so I'll go ahead. Now, the reason I want to expand the geographic or downtown of the Main Street program. And if you look what kind of retail space in, Mr. Grant was no best, that's available today outside of the Jones Building. There's really not much. There's really not much for somebody to come in and open such as an establishment. And if we want downtown to grow, the lawyer's not going to move out. In fact, we might get more of it. But, uh, if you look. But seriously, is that there's just not a, a lot of space available for these type of establishments to come in regardless of what we do. We can make it super attractive, but unless they build next to the downtown kitchen or up here at our new park, take that, uh, piece of land and then, uh, one fifty-one building has two locations outside that. We're done. We're done. We gotta have larger boundaries. And that's the reason I say unless Bill Canton, uh, if it's a wine store that wants to open up, I don't know where they're gonna open up down here unless it's one fifty-one or if the Jones Building gets open. I don't know where they'd be.
And I guess, as you're thinking about it, it's, it's the floor space requirement that prohibits you from being a wine shop or a growler. Because you have to have other products. That's only downtown as proposed. So you wouldn't have a wine shop outside of downtown. The tasting license, however, is not tied into being a wine shop or a growler as proposed. It's just an ancillary tasting license for anybody who has a retail package license. So anybody that sells beer or wine could get a tasting license under the way it's proposed. But, so that's.
Kroger could do that if they wanted to.
They could come get a tasting license.
Right.
It's just a separate license, so they have to come tell the city, we want to do it. And you would know they're then able to do it.
Mr. Grant?
One, one question I had or comment, and it relates to Mr. Cummings' differences between a growler offering a taste from a keg versus a wine shop that, uh, or tasting room that has to open a bottle of wine for a taste. There's a very big different economic metrics difference there is that you can't afford to open a bottle of wine, offer a taste and not be able to sell that wine. And coming from someone who's been to a lot of wine tasting rooms, it's typical for, um, you know, wine tasting, especially the vineyards, uh, to charge for tasting menu. We could do it under this ordinance, say, you know, two ounces, four tasting of two ounces. They could offer a ta, four tastings of red or four tastings of white or two red or two white. But it's not economically viable for those wine stores to open a bottle of wine and taste when anyone wants to taste. There is a difference and I think that's, it's the difference between the growler and how it's produced and, and how it's stored and, and how it's preserved. And so I think it's something we need to pay attention to. I'm all in favor of, of the growler and more wine shops.
I mean, then when I separate the two and just say, or I even have a package store for wine if you want to downtown. And you don't have to adhere to the square footage. Don't combine with tasting if that's the problem with the issue.
And they are separate, that's why I was trying to clarify. The, the wine shop can only, the wine shop meaning something that only sells wine could only happen downtown under the proposal.
Wine shop could not sell beers, what?
Well, the, what we, what we, because it's about the floor space requirement, you could have a store selling beer and wine under the retail package license without the floor space. So they could be wine only, they could be beer only, they could be beer and wine.
And if they had tastings, would they have to have two licenses or one?
Two, because we created it as an ancillary tasting license.
So what you're saying is I can go in and get a six pack of a wine?
Somebody could open up a basic convenience store without selling other products downtown. What does change?
I don't know. I'm in favor of them, but that's all right.
All right, well, let's get, give some thought to that and everyone has a copy of that, so, so read, read what in detail and, and we'll take a look at that at the next meeting and try to answer any questions.
So we need to tell Mr. what draft, uh, or we. When, but we already have several comments about changes they want to see. Are we going to leave it like it is or?
I think we'll leave it like it is and then, you know, we don't have to adopt it at the very next meeting.
Well, yeah, anyway. Well, we could, but.
But, uh, and I, I probably need some more discussion and then we hopefully will come to some consensus as to what we need to do to, to, uh, wrap that over.
Also, for clarification, I did want to ask, but we did ref, uh, reference the Woodstock ordinance where the growler store is open. I mean, just as, we're not just kind of creating this out of the blue, that it was based on something that's been done in Woodstock recently for that growler store, which if anyone's been there is very nice, is very different from a package store.
Woodstock and several other cities that adopted it and I looked through it and tried to pick overboard for us. This is basically the way cities are doing it. It's, it, every city had this prohibition against refilling bottles. So that's the thing that you have to change.
Okay, all right. Go to the next item. I would see, uh, commission on Canton's future, uh, vision of the future update plan. Mr. Rush, Rush?
Is it okay if I go to the podium? The vision for Canton twenty fifty was created in April of this year with the objective of providing the city council with current suggestions that will, if implemented, guide the long-term positive growth and progress of the city of Canton. Each council member and the mayor selected and appointed three Canton residents with commission terms running concurrently with their own terms of office. The original list is provided, uh, there's twenty-one of us. Two people have resigned, uh, for conflict reasons and, uh, there's nineteen left of which I don't know, something like twelve, I think are going to be removed. I have to resign as the chairman and, uh, Bill was also on the ca, commission and he will have to resign because we are now council members. We voted at the first meeting in April for the chairman and, uh, vice chairman, who was Ben Key, and then secretary was Candace Walker Funda. The May, the April meeting was organizational. The May, June and August meetings were conducted by the Atlanta Regional Commission. And they were really great, providing us guidance in our brainstorming sessions about where we want to go as a, a city of Canton. All those audio and video, uh, note, there's some notes and they're pretty extensive notes. Should be available on the City of Canton website, but the May, June, July and August meetings are recorded. The September, October, November meetings without the A R C are also recorded and they should be on the website. The commission determined, through the, through this, through our commission and with the help of the A R C, we kind of determined that the shape of Canton's future would be determined by seven key words. Education, transportation, economy, community, culture, governance and technology. Some of the ideas that have come from this commission are this. The change, we're looking for a change of attitude regarding new business in Canton to include rolling out the Great Carbon, those words, uh, for businesses and a buttsman position to help with new bu, the new business process. The ser, we'd like to survey businesses who have decided not to open in Canton and try to determine why. Why are we losing businesses that come and look at Canton and decide not to? How are you going to know what to correct if you don't know why they're not, not going to open a business? We'd like to interview new Canton businesses after one year with the goal of a response being it was the best experience ever. Right now I can tell you that's probably a challenge for us, so we got to, we got some work to do. We'd like to interview the principal of our most troubled schools to determine what causes the problems. Maybe invite Dr. P to come to one of our meetings to tell us about our schools. We, as a council, don't determine the schools, but we sure are affected by them. We'd like to, uh, we have a very rapidly growing Hispanic population, almost thirty percent of the city of Canton is Hispanic. And we're tr, we determined that perhaps an adult Spanish to English lessons provided maybe by the city would be beneficial, or at least we could implement and help implement that process. We wanted to see if maybe state and federal head start monies might be available for Spanish to English lessons. Technology, education needs of our city. Integration and ease of use of the City of Canton websites. There was an issue that came up, Camille came to one of our meetings and explained to us how our websites work. There's a lot more of them that we didn't know about and that we were trying to figure out how to make them work better together. City of Canton residents and, uh, city to Canton and resident, Canton to city communication needs. In other words, how are we as a city communicating with the residents and how are the residents commuting with us as a city? We want, uh, the city council, we will have a city council that works and hopefully the three of us will help that solution a little bit. The need for a database of Canton businesses. We don't have a database, we don't know what we have here. I didn't want to meet to slight the, the old members in the city council, but hopefully together we can all work together. There will be many new appointments by this, to this commission, but the continuing members should be contacted by the council members who appointed them to determine their interest and commitment to the Vision for Canton commission program. There was a lot of times when only eight, six, eight, well, eight to ten people showed up out of twenty-one. And it, it's great to have committed people that come. We appreciate the ideas of the people that come. And, uh, it, try to select, we as council members need to select people that are committed to this program. The commission's success will be directly proportional to the input and commitment of its members. So I'm very proud to have served on this. I think we got started off in the right direction. Now we just have to pass the baton off to the next commission members to really take a hard look at what we can do, not thirty-five years or thirty-seven years from now, thirty-six years now. But, but what, what, what can we do tomorrow to make changes that will affect us? So thank you very much and I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the vision of Canton. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to ask, Mr. Russ, uh, in a little bit of a dialogue, I guess you might say. The two thousand, uh, the study that was done in two thousand eight called two thousand thirty. You've seen that document, I assume?
It's a book, yes.
Yeah, it is a book.
Yeah.
And, uh, many, I imagine several people that are in this room tonight were on that committee and it went for months with good participation. And, uh, I, I'm curious as how that is working. Using that book because it's a heck of a book.
Hooky, I think these two programs were designed for different reasons. I think the book, if you can correct me, Mr. Mayor, if I'm wrong, but we had a state mandate to create that vision. And the book that was created was really mandated by the state of Georgia.
That's correct.
This one was not. One of the things that I pushed real hard for from day one with this vision for Canton is the freedom to think beyond boundaries. Meaning brainstorm and don't tell me what we can't do, just tell me what we can do without restrictions on what that might be. So that's the, that's the, that's the way we started.
And that's the way this was done. We had no restrictions on us and we were told brainstorm, think out of the box, all those good things. The only things, one of the things that's different that I find that I would, how do you recommend? Is that it won't be anybody in this room, they're being around in two thousand fifty. The one that we put together was for two thousand thirty, which means, you know, we need to get to work. And there's a lot of good stuff if we haven't. I know one member, one of my appointees who recently resigned, says that book was basically says it all. Now, you do bring up some great questions and some great ideas about, um, some of the follow-up, how to get to those goals that we had previously set in the study of two thousand thirty or for two thousand thirty. And, and I guess I see you got one that's already done and now we're doing another one and I, I, I see a redundancy, a large amount of redundancy.
What was, Hooky, your appointment was Bill Hill. Was he on the twenty fif, twenty thirty commission?
Oh, no, pardon, no, he was not.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe that's, that's why you mentioned it. But he has read the book?
I gave him, he, I gave him the book. I gave him my copy. Since he, he has since returned.
And you've read the whole thing?
I was the chairman of that committee, by the way.
Oh, oh, to create the whole thing?
I was the chairman of the committee with the leadership of additional, I can't take credit for it, but, um.
How, how, how long did it take to do that book?
Oh, jeez. You better ask Mr. Patton there because he was the driving force behind it. Ken, are you in the off?
He's, he's back there, yeah.
Ken, would you?
Uh, the work for the comprehensive plan that you're talking about, uh, took place over about a nine- a nine-month period, final adoption of the Vision Twenty Thirty Plan was accomplished by mayor and council in February of two thousand nine. Citizens Committee began work in April or May of two thousand eight, and Citizens Committee completed their work in October, November of two thousand eight.
Ken, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but that plan had to conform to the regional plan, and the regional plan had to conform to the state plan?
Yes, sir, that was, Vision Twenty Thirty was a requirement of the Georgia Planning Act of nineteen eighty-nine, and there were planning standards that all comprehensive plans for local governments have to address, and that's part of that whole process, yes, sir.
Okay.
It was a blue ribbon committee, and I want to tell you, there was a heck of a lot of work that went into it, and yes, it was directed to us from the state, which is not all bad, but what I'm suggesting, if you took that book, or study, or whatever you want to refer to it, and use that as your basis, you could get, the visionary part that you, some of the things you mentioned, John, were excellent, and I just think they need to be just worked into that, but that's, that's you for two thousand thirty rather than two thousand fifty. I'd like to hopefully maybe see that two thousand thirty, or see something in between.
Thank you. Hooky, I, could I say just one more thing?
One more thing?
Thank you. Hooky, one thing, I am going to be off this commission, Bill's going to be on this commission, but we're certainly welcome, as council members, to come to these meetings, so I, I would appreciate, I'm going to try to come to them, I would appreciate if you would come and try to give us some of the insights from that twenty thirty, go to try to integrate some of that into what we're trying to do.
Do you have a copy of that?
I do not have a copy of that, I've seen it, but I don't have a copy of it. I can get one, I'm sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to the next item here now. Discussion and first reading of the Planning Commission Recommendation for Cases, E C A thirteen eleven dash zero zero one, Summer Walk Amendment of Existing Condition Number Six, I guess, you know, Ken, you need to explain that to us?
Yes, sir, I'll come up. As you said, this is a application to amend existing condition that runs with a subdivision, it's a current case, Z C A thirteen eleven zero zero one, off Summer Walk subdivision, there was an existing condition of zoning approval that specified that a percentage of all of the structure of lots would be front entry garages, a percentage would be side entry garages, and a percentage would be rear entry garages. The applicant made application to amend that, to delete the rear entry garages, and proposed the, the development being completed with front entry garages, side entry garages. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this, they did recommend approval of the change of the condition to read, the total number of single-family detached homes shall be constructed with one hundred fifty dollars on front entry garages, one hundred twenty-six side entry garages. Gas meters shall be located to the rear of the house or along the sidewall of the house opposite of the entry on side loaded garages.
Okay, Mr. Cummins?
Yeah, I have. Little problem because of the definition of what we call a rear entry garage. My definition of rear entry garage is these communities where they build an alleyway and those garages are entered from the rear, and I think that was the intent of the original, was it not, Mr. Patton?
That was, I wasn't here when the original was put in place and that sort of thing, Councilor Cummins, my professional training, a rear entry garage is the rear of a house, alleys, that sort of thing. Summer Walk was developed without alleys, there were topographic constraints, lot sizes in which no rear entry garages had been built. There was some discussion that a previous staff member had possibly agreed to allow an entry on the side of the home, but at the rear of the home, account for those rear entry garages. My opinion, that is not a rear entry garage. Because of this difference, that is why they are coming before this body requesting that specific condition be amended to delete the rear entry garages.
Well, then, you're, you're, you would like you were the same, huh?
Yes, sir.
My other question is related to the gas meters, shall be located to the rear of the house or on the side of the house opposite of the garage entry. Now, I was always under the impression that the reason that we put the gas meters on the rear of the house relative to the garage side was a safety issue, was that, is that not the case where we want to keep the gas line away from the garage?
The, there was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission in regards to this issue. There was one individual that spoke at the public hearing in opposition to all side entrance garages, because there was an incident where the gas meter at their home was hit by a vehicle, and it created a gas leak. There were discussions about bollards being placed, none of the, no one representing the builder was there, the person who's standing here behind me, Mr. Victor Young, that made the proposal and made the presentation of the Planning Commission could not address anything in regards to the builder and agreement with placement of the meters. I have since, the Planning Commission meeting discovered that there was an agreement with Atlanta Gaslight because of rock out there at Summer Walk, that there would be one primary service line run between two homes with stub outs to the gas meters. The individual that was in opposition to all side entry garages, the gas meter at that home was about three and a half, four feet beyond all concrete driveway and entrance into the garage door, but it was still hit by a vehicle.
In Summer Walk specifically, I went out there and looked at it, specifically, the word "to" the rear of the house in this terminology means behind the midpoint, is that?
Well, the intent was it'd be placed along the rear side of the home, or the side opposite from where the driveway is.
But on the side of the driveway, if you look at it, it's very evident that he has run the gas lines through the back wall of the garage.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and is that allowed according to the original, I mean, I'm a little confused as to what to the rear of the house means. To me, I can interpret that past the halfway point, or I could interpret that as being at the rear of the house.
The intent of the Planning Commission, I believe, was that the gas meter would be located along the rear side of the house, and not to the rear of the house, either along the backside of the house or the side opposite where the driveway and garage is.
So, what you're telling me is apparently we have not adhered to the way this is defined? They have not adhered to it?
You're talking about builder, developer?
Or the developer, the interpretation.
That is, that is additional language the Planning Commission is recommending city council incorporate, that is not in the existing conditions of zoning approval that run with Summer Walk. Atlanta Gaslight runs service lines and puts meters kind of where they want to.
Ken, let me, let me ask two questions here.
Yes, sir.
Why is, why can this development not be built as the original agreement was with the Planning Commission made? Why can, why can it not be built that way? Is there a reason it can't be built?
In plain language, no, it would just require them to put in an awful lot more impervious surface to accommodate those rear entry garages.
Okay, and although that is what was required by the original Planning Commission. The second, the second item, I have a question I have is, why are we messing with gas meters? Looks to me like, is there not a code section or something that, and somebody else makes that, is that not a pretty standard placement or something? I mean, you know? It's not in our code as to where you place a gas meter?
No, sir, not in the City of Kent codes, there's really nothing in the building codes that are enforced by the city in regards to location of those gas meters. My opinion is that Planning Commission was trying to address the concerns expressed by that one citizen with that one instance, with the gas meter on the side of their home.
So, the, the, most of, I guess most of the time, it's been meeting our fire code?
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's got to be something about a fire code and placement of fi, of gas meters, I would think.
Yes, sir, our building inspection department, even if a gas meter is located inside of three feet of the driveway or garage door, generally we'll ask them to put bollards up to help protect, and I can pass around some photographs of several of the structures out there at Summer Walk, and majority of the gas meters are quite a distance away from garage doors and entries. That one individual's meter was over four feet separation by grass sod from any concrete or garage door.
I would, I would kind of like to understand a little more about what was in the minds of the Planning Commission that made the original recommendation to divide the number of houses up into the three categories. I mean, why did they do that? And maybe if, if you could, I don't know if you've had a chance or could look at the minutes from the, from that year that it was done?
I'll certainly see what I can find for minutes in regards to the requirement for a certain percentage to be front, to be side, and to be rear. I do know that a lot of communities were trying to encourage a different look within residential subdivisions, and that's a part of the reason, I think, behind having breakups, if you will, between not having all front entry or having all side entry, and that sort of thing.
Now, were these, are these being built, I mean, one whole street's not rear entry, are they?
No, sir.
And one whole street's not front entry?
No, sir, there are two different sized lots that are built out there, and the side entry, front entry garages are mixed along all of the streets out there. The side entry structures are built on the wider lots, and the front entry garages are built on the narrower lots.
Okay, before I, this, we are considering this the first reading of this Planning Commission Recommendation?
I have one question, Ken. A hundred and fifty-five front entry, a hundred and twenty-six side entry, is that a change in density? Are they adding more?
No, sir, that's not.
Is there some motivation then to do this? Why are they, just because it's?
The motivation to make this change, because they've got, under the current conditions, on an approval with the requirement for the rear entry garages, they will end up with, it's either forty-one or forty-two lots that will require rear entry garages that they are not willing at this point in time to want to try to undertake, putting in concrete for the whole backyard, if you will, and felt it was easier to amend the condition to delete the rear entry, the continued development?
They would just not build those forty-one lots then, or what? The way it stands?
Either that, or like I said, basically pave all of the backyards to put in rear entry garages.
The zoning board recommended that we approve it, right?
Approve the change to front entry and side entry with that added language about the gas meter.
Okay, anyone else have, have any questions, Ken, at this time? This will be back on for our second reading in action on the second.
Does this gentleman need to say anything?
We want to.
He needs to say help, clarify.
Yeah, a couple here, they're closed, but if council wants to.
Does Council have any, you want to?
Is there anything?
Do I have a motion that we allow, allow Mr. Victor?
Victor Young.
Victor Young to speak, have a motion?
Yes.
At second?
Second.
Those are favor, support, and I would say aye?
Aye.
Both no?
No.
Y'all need to vote for the motion exception, Mr. Cummins, go ahead.
Thank you, Doc. I guess I missed the public call, I was supposed to be during the public, comment during the public portion of it.
You could have, yeah, that's, that's all right, go ahead.
Let me clarify, I can, real quickly, the breakdown point was originally the zone was fifty-five percent of the property, front entry garages, thirty percent side entry, and fifteen percent rear entry, okay? Property was designed, still designed, preliminary plats approved by the city, final plats approved by the city after the build. The problem was that with the, there were no rear alleys, okay? So, the rear entry was a specific requirement, and the intent of the city was to frankly have a variety of housing styles, which limited front entry garage, so everything's not able to be loaded. So, when I became aware that the zoning condition was going to prohibit this property from being able to have rear alleys, because it was already built, I went to the planning zoning director and said, let's see if we can figure out how to make this work so as these lots will get built on. So, they, the builder was doing front entry garages, and he was doing side entry garages. But then we said, okay, what we'll do is we'll do a, a side entry, but put it as close to the back of the house as possible. So, they really, so builder designed the plan, it was a front entry, a side entry, and then a side entry that was as far back as possible. So, if the streets gate, you didn't see garages, and so that's what we did. I thought we had it worked out, and then Mr. Patton, when he came in rightly, said, well, that wasn't a decision we made at the planning and zoning department, it was a city council decision because of the zoning condition. So, for that, we apologize and ask that this be corrected so that these lots be built on. The negative impact will be that it's going to be forty to forty-five lots that can't be built on, and the property association dues, homeowners be raised, because we cover the entity, it's a four hundred fifty dollars a year per homeowner that has to pay, so that'd be forty to forty-two lots lost revenue. It's going to look like a P D C farm forever, all those remaining lots, you can't build on them, it's going to be tax revenue on the houses, and then the builder, I'm sure we're going for a reduction on the lot value because lots won't be built. The only solution to building on would be to, as Mr. Patton said, would be to pull the garage around the side, pave the backyard so you can do a one-eighty and drive in the back.
So, are you telling me that the, the city's review of this plans really didn't conform to what their condition was, because the, the plans that were approved by the city did not show the streets that it took to have rear entrances?
Yeah, I, I think where it got dropped was in the language of the zoning, the language of zoning said rear entry. In my opinion, if I've done this in other jurisdictions, if you're going to have a rear alley access, the condition ought to be clearly stated as rear alley access lines, and then you don't have any questions. There's the same rear entry, nobody thought about, well, we'll design this thing, by the way, how do you get the garage? They get the house, car to come in the back of the house.
So, the plans that, that they approved didn't show any alleys?
No.
But required rear entry garages?
Required garage on the back of the house, and the only way to do it is to pave backyard. On the gas issue, there was just that one homeowner, which that was an entirely separate issue in respect to the location of the gas issue, and I couldn't speak to that, the builders here tonight to speak to that at all. here tonight can speak to that if you want to talk about it. But that was unrelated. That person that brought that up, the homeowner that brought that up, he, he didn't want any side entry, even once it approved, because of this issue, maybe that's an entirely different issue outside of what we were, but it's gonna impact the homeowners, the city in terms of tax base, et cetera, if it's denied. It's just gonna be lots whenever you build on.
I have a better understanding of it. Does anyone else have any questions, Mr. Cummings? Okay. Well, thank you. This will go on to the next, next meeting on the sixteenth. Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda discussion, and, and this will be the first reading of the planning commission recommendation for case Z thirteen eleven dash zero zero two, Byron Sonny, rezoned from CDB to LI Railroad Street. Matt, you wanna try to explain that one to me again?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This property does have a railroad street address. Property is on Central Business District and Etowah River Corridor. Etowah River Corridor has no permitted uses. Everything is conditional use. There was an automotive paint body shop that went into one of the buildings owned by Mr. Sonny that was not in compliance with CBD or ERC zoning. They were notified of this and instructed to either stop the business, relocate the business from there, or attempt to correct it through zoning. They have requested to rezon the property light industrial, which would allow the automotive paint bodies permitted use.
Anyone have a question about that? What else? What else? We don't have anything down there. Not much down there, right?
There are some businesses that are operating down there.
Yeah.
In all. One of the buildings is between Railroad Street and railroad tracks. The other building is on the other side of the railroad tracks. Historically, all of those buildings down in there have been used for light industrial purposes. It was a thought that light industrial would be the best method to try to correct this in regards to the automotive paint body shop.
Now, this, I know it doesn't, it doesn't say that here, and it must be a typo. It says rezoned from CBD to LI, but it's CBD and ERC.
Yes, sir.
Okay. ERC allows for, I thought you could put almost anything in ERC so long as it was, you got conditional approval?
Yes, sir. There are no permitted uses listed. Everything is a conditional use approval.
So, I think you explained this to me one time, but I want to hear again. Is, why did, why wouldn't we just say, "Okay, we're gonna permit that as a conditional use," as opposed to changing the zoning there and perhaps putting a type of zoning there that we may or may not have desired in the future?
The listing of possible uses acceptable for the ERC zoning does not include automotive paint body repair. It would require an amendment to our existing zoning ordinance to include automotive paint body as a possible allowed use of, under a listing of conditional uses, if you will.
But is that kind of, listing of conditional uses, is that exhaustive? Is that, is that intended to be everything you could possibly put there? Or is it something that you need to be reasonable about and say, "Well, you know, that, maybe not exactly one of those, but it's something close"?
Yeah, something close. Is it?
I mean, I don't.
You can't name every business, but if there's something close to what that is.
Well, the Etowah River Corridor, if I remember right, has no permitted uses.
Correct.
But has, and it has limited potential uses.
Yes.
It's not, it's not that anything can go in there. There's a certain list of things that go in there. None of them would be close to that. It's intended to be more office and perhaps retail, but not.
Okay. Mr. Gruber?
Being in the Etowah River Corridor, being a paint body shop, is there any risk of pollution hazard to this area with this type of business?
Ken, you wanna answer that one?
Well, you're always gonna have any potential for environmental degradation, if you will. But where this business is located, there's a good bit of natural land that is grass and things of that nature, plus automotive paint body shops have to meet certain requirements in regards to how they operate to protect air, water quality, stormwater, things of that nature.
But that may be, that may be the reason that that's not included on the list of ERC, perhaps?
Possible.
Mr. Gruber?
Since this business has been here already and asking for rezoning, can we look at, have they been a good steward of the environment and look at their practices of disposal?
They have been operating since about March of last year.
Wow.
We, it has not been a multiple years of business operation with the automotive paint body shop. This is something that moved in, leased that space. City personnel found out about it, went talked with the business owners, the property owners, let them know that that was not an allowed business, asked them to come to city council to discuss it. They did not come to city council. We went back to them again and asked, and that's where we are now, is that we've requested to rezon the property, the light industrial. So, they, they said they didn't wanna come to city council, or you gave them an invitation and they just, no show? We suggested that they come to city council and discuss this on two occasions prior to making the application for light industrial's on.
Many years ago, in another, another life, county used to, when, when they issued a business license, one of the questions on the application was, "What's the zoning of this property?" Does ours not do that?
Our occupational tax license does not contain that anymore.
We need to put that back in, I think. That way, some of these things would at least get caught before it got too late. But, anyone else have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Patton, have you been to the shop itself?
No, sir, I'm not. Steve Green, the zoning administrator, I think Mark Crossby, the building official, Randy Johnson, our code officer who works out of the police department.
Oh, the reason I ask is that, I don't have a long career in paint and body and things like that, but I've been around some. Some are quite nice, and some are not. I'm just wondering, as Mr. Gruber's asking about environmental, and then they don't wanna show up to even have a discussion with council. I guess at least kind of a negative thought in my mind is what kind of business they are gonna be.
We've, we've not issued any citations in regards to any problems or issues with that business. Whether it be an environmental issue, a air quality issue, the only issue is that they're operating, they're in zone presently, doesn't allow it to operate there.
You know how many employees they have?
Uh, no, sir. I think Mr. Green probably does.
Anything else? Thank you, Ken. This will be on our next council. This is the first reading, and it will be on our agenda for the sixth, meeting on the sixteenth. Do you have any, in fact, it's a city manager's letter to the council and for your information. Under council introduced items, did you want to talk more about expanding the Main Street boundaries?
Well.
I know you mentioned some earlier.
Yeah, I did. And I know work that, that's been done by the people in, in the room tonight with Main Street, and I, and I've been given a lot of thought. I'm a big proponent of Main Street, but I just see that we are somewhat limited of what we can do as far as bringing businesses down here because of, we don't have the space. The city's really kinda leased out, except that one big building, Jones Building. So, I'm saying that if we want to increase downtown Canton, we might need to increase the boundaries, which might include, let Main Street get involved. Now, I know this would be a big challenge, a huge challenge for Main Street, but what if they took over? My end.
Are you talking about Railroad Street?
Yeah.
I, I believe that's part of it. It is part of it.
Oh, Main Street?
Well, yeah, I think it's in CBD district in, in the core. I believe it is.
Is that right?
Yes. Railroad Street to John Pettit, York Street.
Yeah, that's part of it. That old mill, mill area is, is part of it, probably.
Well, that is.
So, we got some more room, maybe?
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do, but that's very crazy. Well, I.
Next item.
Definitely refreshing.
Uh, the, the next item was, uh.
Oh, I know what it was.
Yeah, Mr. Park Liaison.
Yeah, I mean, we're getting ready to finish up a spectacular park. I know he's not here, but someone might not like the way the man conducted his business all the time, but I want to tell you, he had this city, city at heart when he went about trying to get some things done. And, and he's done an outstanding job with this city park. Mr. Cummings was, I think, absolutely right in suggesting that Mr. Beresford continue on. And I've spoken with him, and he said he would like to see this to the end because he spent a lot of time and effort in it. And I think this, our city council should indeed, for many reasons, to extend that to him, to allow, allow him to go ahead and finish that. Now, I open that, I bring that up as a point of discussion. I would like to put it to next, at the next meeting, as Ms. Tannen put that on the agenda, to bring that to a vote. I think we need to bring this park to, to a finale, and.
Mr. Gruber?
I would also agree. There's several of such work on this park, going back to the standards. He spent twenty-three years, I spent twenty-four years, Mr. Beresford spent thirty-one years. We're all looking forward to getting this park open, to get very close to it. We really need somebody that's gonna spend some time out there, make sure we get what we want. Mr. Beresford really has to do a lot of time, got that, and Mr. Cummings' suggestion was very good.
Mr. Gruber, you had a question?
I do.
Comment?
I have, I think having Mr. Beresford continuing that role is a really good idea. He's done a great job. I do have some concerns and questions, and so I don't know. Maybe Mr. Dyer would be the one to ask about that and jump in, anybody. Mr. Beresford is a citizen now and not a city employee. So, were he on the property of the park and twisted his ankle on a rock, how would the city be liable for an injury? Would Mr. Beresford be compensated for his time working with the park, sitting at three, four hours as the city? Would he be a liaison between the city and the construction crew? Would the construction crew ask him questions, and then he would come to the council to get those answers? What would his role be? And, you know, I, I'm concerned for a citizen, as he's warned us many times, as citizens, not to go to the park because it's dangerous. So, I would be concerned for his safety as well, and not be properly insured as a city employee on this construction site. So, those are not, I'm not being a naysayer, I'm being concerned for his welfare and his safety.
Well, I think, answer some of those questions. One, he's not an employee, but, and he does, he wears a hard hat when he goes out there. So, John takes his safety, and he works in conjunction with Mr. Bill, Eccles, Eccles, thank you, Bill Eccles with the county. And they have a meeting every other Thursday morning with the people who are building it, the county, himself. I have been in attendance on many occasions, but not all occasions. And occasionally, there are some other people that come in there. That's where the meeting is. It's held on-site in their trailer, you might say. And they look at plans, they go over details, they have an agenda. Yeah, they have a printed, and as well as the architects there. I don't wanna leave them out. So, yes, safety is, maybe at one time it might have been a big issue, and yes, he could still step off in spring cycles. Those type of issues could come up, and we could give the answer to that.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, when I was looking at it, the thing that I thought the only way that it can mechanically work well was as if we had a council committee that actually did that, and that if Mr. Beresford was included as a citizen advisor but controlled by the committee. I don't think we have the mechanics, nor the legal ability just to turn him loose to go out and work with a contractor or work with Mr. Eccles or anything legally. But there's nothing wrong that he couldn't participate and provide to a committee if you so choose to establish such a committee, that he couldn't provide the expertise and knowledge that he's required. But I would think that would be the legal and best way to probably approach that.
Mr. Robb?
I have an answer to one of Hooky's questions. As John, sitting in his seat, said, wants that he, his salary would be zero. So, he's already answered one of your questions. He, he doesn't want a salary, that's easy. But technically, I think there is one issue. Until the county signs off on this and turns it over to us, it seems like the county is more controlled in this land than we are. And if he breaks a leg, it's a county issue, not our issue.
But it's our house. It's our problem.
I, I understand that.
We own the property. If you ever own that property, you know who they're gonna see.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that we might consider though is going to Bill Eccles and asking him that we are considering this, what my joke issues be with having him involved, and just see if they're okay with it, then we can consider it that, under those circumstances. And, and the other thing I was gonna ask is, I'm trying to figure out exactly what his role would be. If we have, if you create a council committee for overseeing the finishing of this park, where does he fit? I, I, I'm just trying to understand where he might fit, what's wrong with that.
Can I answer some of those questions?
Sure.
Just, I would probably be the most natural person to go over there with John, because we have been together before and during this development of the park. I cannot take credit for anything as much as John has done. I, I just can't. But he has a special relationship with the people who are overseeing that. You're right, John. He, he is not gonna ask for a nickel. It's just sheer pride of seeing something that's, was big in his heart, he wants to see to a finish. And we can build a story and make some, make some reasons why it shouldn't be, if you want to. It's just, the matter is, do you wanna do it or not? And I'll be a committee of one, and John's not gonna step out of line. If you wanna do it, fine. If you don't, I think it's horrible, but.
Okay, I didn't mean.
No, I don't.
My comments weren't meant to.
I understand.
End the program, the idea. I'm just saying, there's a couple of questions we need to have answered. And then, how do you wanna implement it? I mean, I'm not against.
Well, I'm hearing some things that, if you wanted, if, if somebody wanted to build a story for it, not doing it, they can easily do it.
I agree. Anyone else? Okay.
So, that will be on the agenda next, next meeting?
You put that on, it will be on the agenda for the next meeting, yes. The only, the only other item that we have is, you have at your desk, and I think we have emailed it, maybe a copy of all the various citizen-type committees, and where there are or will be existing vacancies, where we will need to either reappoint certain people or replace people. And I would just urge you, the process, of course, is, is that the mayor makes the nomination, the council confirms that. Or if the council doesn't like the mayor. Or if the council doesn't like the mayor's nomination, then they can nominate someone on their own accord and get it approved.
Mr. Blair?
Yes. Does everybody have to be a citizen of the city to get on these committees?
No. It depends on the committee. It depends on the committee, though. But, but, no, zoning? I'm not sure, I think so. It states in there.
Someone's in that definition.
I did not come out off of your zoning, which you were appointing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I had intended, because you had committee members on here, and you used the word committee as an all-inclusive, you had said to me that it was your intention to set up an interim city management appointment committee.
Uh, yes.
To that?
As a matter of fact, I did have a note there, and this would be, this would be a committee, and I'm going to throw the new ones in all of a sudden here, Mr. Rust, Ms. McGrew, and Mr. Grant, to take a look at how we proceed in the interim, in the absence. Currently, currently, we approved, as you know, some time ago, Mr. Wood's selection of Nathan Ingram to fill in in his absence for up to two weeks. So that's already actually been done. So we could have this committee, the committee could meet right away and begin to decide how we want to proceed, to make sure the office is, is functioning as it should have until we begin the process of, of searching for another city manager.
Yeah, and that's the other thing I wanted to mention to you under the committees, is that you need to begin to think about, and maybe by the sixteenth...
Form a search committee is specified? Yeah, I will do that, I will do that soon. That, that is specified in the charter, that's the process for doing that. Okay. So what I, what I was, what I was saying about the committees is, I would like for you to, to please take a look at those committees, make recommendations, if you would send to me, and any names that you feel would be good in those capacities. I would, I would appreciate if you did, though, and be sure that you have checked with these people, and make sure they're willing to serve and, and desire us to serve in, in that capacity. Yes?
Mayor, the, the vision for Ken in 2050, is the procedure a little different with that? Maybe we select the wrong?
Right. And the vision 2050, the council members each, absolutely, there's no nomination or any of that, each council member selects three people that they want to attend. And so now you, you have that option, and, and Mr. Grant does, and Ms. McGrew does as well, so we're probably going to have some new members on there, no doubt. And maybe it'll give it a shot in the arm, and maybe even further, further up. But I think, I think it has accomplished a good bit already. I mean, this, this vision, this commission of Canton's future is, is, is something, I don't see it ending ultimately. I mean, it, it has to keep going, it's an ongoing process, and, and it's shaping a vision all the time. And that things that we do here need to kind of take that into account and try to make sure that, that plans that we develop conform to that long-term vision.
One last thing. The individuals that we select have to be residents of the city of Canton?
I think it, I think it makes sense to do that, on that particular condition.
Can we just submit them to you, these are...
If you think about it, I mean, as much, as much investment as most of our, a lot of our business people have in the city that don't work here or, or don't live in the city, I think the vision for our city needs to be the vision of the citizens of this city. That's just my thought. Anything else?
It's a good one.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, have a second. Those in favor, super PAC, saying aye?
Aye.
All members voted for motion. Thank you all very much.